Members, it's time and we have a call room. I would call to order the special meeting. There are two sessions today up to six twenty P M. First of all, I would like to welcome the Secretary for Labor and Welfare and his team to the meeting. This session is on welfare and women. As for the session on labor, uh, and next session will be on labor. So first, I would invite the Secretary to make some opening remarks. Thank you. Chairman and members, in twenty eighteen to nineteen, government's recurrent spending on social welfare and women's interests is expected, is estimated to be seventy-nine point eight billion dollars, accounting for nineteen point six percent of the total recurrent government expenditure of the year. And so the increase in the is fourteen billion dollars or twenty-one point three percent compared to the previous year. On elderly care, um, recurring government expenditure is estimated to reach nine point one billion dollars in twenty eighteen, representing an increase of about eight percent, eighteen percent over the revised estimate in twenty seventeen to eighteen. That includes the additional one thousand vouchers under the pilot scheme on community care service voucher for the elderly, bringing it total to six thousand. There will also be enhancement of dementia care and the support for needy carers of elderly persons. There will also be professional outreach services and visiting medical practitioner services for residents in private residential care homes for the elderly. There will be increase in the salaries of frontline care staff of subsidized to elderly care service units as well. The government will also provide speech therapy services for elderly service units to assist elderly persons with swallowing difficulties or speech impairment. Now for the government public transport fare concession scheme for the elderly and eligible persons with disabilities. In twenty seventeen to eighteen, the expenditure estimate is one point one billion dollars by in twenty eighteen ninety will be increased to around one point three billion dollars. Hong Kong Rehabilitation Program Plan, the review is started, is hoped that by the end of twenty nineteen, the report could be submitted to the government. On strengthening care for persons with disabilities, fifty million dollars have been set as earmarked for setting up a dedicated office to provide special needs trust for parents of children with special needs. There will also be an increase in the annual recurrent funding by about forty billion dollars for increasing the number of parents' relatives resource centers from six to nineteen progressively. Starting from October twenty eighteen, the S W D will regularize the pilot project on strengthening support for persons with autism and their parents or carers. And the service places will be increased from hundred and sixty to two hundred and forty per annum. On community mental health services, the S W D will provide additional funding to integrated community centers for mental healthness wellness. So there could be additional clinical psychologists and social and assistant social work officers. On promoting employment of persons with on on children and youth services, um, there will be a three-year pilot project starting in twenty eighteen with funds from the lottery skip fund. They to provide social work service in phases for about one hundred fifty thousand children and the families in all aided standalone childcare centers, subsidized aided kindergartens and kindergarten comes childcare centers. As for, um, uh, also, we're going to set up five NGO-run co-parenting support, one-stop a co-parenting support centers with some expense recurring expenditure of about fifty-six million dollars. There will also be additional staff for the family and child protective services units of the S W. Hopefully then we could identify problems at an early stage. And starting from the first of April, as you know, um, we have improved the previous low-income working family allowance scheme. It's now renamed the Working Family Allowance Scheme since the first of April this year. And then from the first of June, we're going to implement the Higher Old Age Living Allowance. On women development, in twenty eighteen to nineteen, we have earmarked around thirty-three million dollars to promote women's interests and support the work of the Women's Commission. This include the assistance to W Women's Commission in implementing a capacity building mileage program and implementing the funding scheme for women's development under the theme of women employment under the eighteen district councils. Thank you. Uh, question twelve. For women in advisory and statutory bodies, A S Bs, the ratio is still rather low. It hasn't reached thirty-five percent benchmark yet. So what's measures do the, does the government have to bring in more women to provide public service? Now, in the reply, there's mention of certain traits. Four and six in the reply. Now, in certain trades, there are more men, that's why it's difficult find women to become members of the relevant A S Bs. Well, I don't agree. If that's the case, then you cannot really find any women to to join any A S Bs. Because if you say that in construction industry, for instance, is male dominated, then why don't you also allow seven women to join the advisory bodies of these industries? Now, I'm, I'm, I represent a union and I am on the container trade union. So you shouldn't use gender to decide whether to invite someone to join a trade, even if it's dominated by men. And then question fourteen, the capacity mileage building program. It seems that in recent years, there's starting, we're starting to see a decline in participation rate. And for those aged under thirty, again, the numbers dropping. Usually we see women over thirty years of age joining the program. Now for the capacity building, mileage building, building mileage program. Would you consider ways to encourage ethnic minorities' women to take part in the program? Because probably these courses are more suited for them. Now, maybe some of the ethnic minorities' women don't want to attend open courses. But if they just go to courses with women only due to the cultural background, maybe they will be more interested. So would you consider promoting the program to ethnic minorities' women? Uh, in different trades and policy areas, there is indeed differential in the ratio between men and women. For welfare services, for instance, it's more, it's easier for us to appoint women to A S Bs. So we don't just want to achieve thirty-five percent where possible. And as far as practicable, we want to increase the ratio to even more than thirty-five percent, although thirty-five percent is a target. Now, question fourteen, or reply fourteen. Women, the number of women in capacity building mileage program is dropping. Well, I think the key reason is that young women enjoy greater access to education even than men. And it's fifty-four percent for women in our subsidized student population. For women, it's only forty-six percent. So our men, it's only forty-six percent, so they actually like the minority. Now, for ethnic minorities, we need to strengthen our work in that respect as a whole. So that's why the Chief Secretary is chairing an interdepartmental working group to look at services for ethnic minorities. In terms of retraining and other aspects, we'll pay particular attention to see how we could enhance such effort. So you haven't answered the question. Yes, it seemed that you haven't answered the question. Yes, even the chairman noticed that. My first question is whether you will invite more women to join different A S Bs. Can you please supplement? When we appoint members to A S Bs, advisory and statutory boards, we will pay particular attention to the ratio between men and women. And where there are suitable candidates, we will appoint women to A S Bs regardless of trades. So that's all I could say by way of supplement. Mister Andrew Wen, two questions about subvention for NGOs voluntary agencies. Now, for those receiving for subvention over two hundred million dollars, referring to NGOs. So I'm sure the secretary knows this, usually the subvention is usually between two to three hundred million dollars. But then there are some with particularly high for, uh, with a high subvention over four hundred million dollars. What is your reply, member? Well, I'm asking a general question, actually. I'm talking about the five biggest groups, Tongwa Group of Hospitals, Caritas, Polan, Kokum, Shinkongui, and Salvation Army and so on. Now, for the sixth, first six, they enjoy a higher subvention. Are there any specific reasons for such differences? Because the difference could be substantial. Or maybe you tell me is because of the services. But then what I see, that seems to be coincidence. Uh, all these groups recently have a certain, have been involved in certain storms, political storms, because their political position seems to be closer to that of the government. So I don't know if that's something to speculate on. And then for these six, the six higher groups, sixty-six have submitted reports on the remuneration of the senior staff. Some have exceptionally high salary. Shinkongui, the Neighborhood Action Council and so on. So is public money being spent properly? That's my question really. And how does the secretary propose to monitor these groups? So they won't just give high pay to senior staff, but not, but they will squeeze their lower staff, junior staff. And and these groups seem to be lean to closer towards government's position. Many of their senior management are in various advisory and statutory bodies of the government. So your reply, please, Secretary. Now, for groups receiving subvention from the government, many of them have had years of experience. So they have a long history of service and they provide large number of services. And of course, then they get more subvention. Because we provide more services, they have higher subvention. So in turn, they hire more people. Now, if they cover extensive scope of services, then of course, there will be more different talents in these groups compared to the smaller NGOs. And when we want to appoint people to A S Bs, of course, the ratio of those from the bit larger N C Os would be higher. So on this, Mister Chairman, therefore, I don't really see the reason for the speculation. But these figures are all objective figures. My other question is how you can prevent senior staff or paying for, for being overpaid while junior staff was squeezed? How do you make sure that public funds are spent properly? Now, under the leadership of the Director of Social Welfare, there is a review committee. It's started work now. Later on, we will be seeking the views of the panel on welfare services. Now, of course, the review will cover the scope. We know that in a community, there are concerns about monitoring over staff pay and we will certainly continue to monitor the developments. Thank you. Doctor An Chen.
I would like to follow reply on, oh, reply one fifty-one on the higher O H living allowance. I'm sure that the secretary, and even though members present, that very often that the retirees would hope that the old age allowance, that the means testing age can be lowered. Though the qualifying ages, but however recently, um, I don't know how, what to tell them. Because, um, someone, this, um, a higher middle class, having worked for their heart throughout their life, he had been paying taxes throughout his life. He had never get any money from government. When he get to sixty-five, and then he claimed that he's qualified for the old age allowance. And then only he was told that he's not eligible because after mean testing, you have to wait till age seventy for non-mean testing. It's not that he cared much about the amount. But why we have to wait till age seventy? Now that a lot of fifty-something or sixty-something are facing retirement anyway. And for the disciplinary forces, the retirement age is fifty-five and some of the women retire at fifty. So for the old age allowance, the intention was to demonstrate appreciation to the public. Why would we not consider lowering the qualifying age from one percent to ten, they have must reach seventy? It's not a huge amount, it's just to show appreciation. For the reply one fifty-one, what would, what no, said, what if you lower the age from seventy to sixty-five for non-mean tested? What is the extra expenditure incurred by the government? However, in the reply, it didn't quite provide the answer to that. It didn't claim that, um, for the twenty fifteen sixteen, the actual expenditure for the age seventy and payment. And so, so how much we cost, we lower that to sixty-five? How much of the extra expenditure incurred? Can the secretary provide us with a figure? Secretary.
So, um, before the establishment of the old age allowance, if we were, well, um, considering our longevity, we would not lower the age. If our longevity have extend by over a decade, we might actually have to tighten the eligibility age with O A. And however, we have yet to consider this today. So we had never considered lowering the non-mean testing age. So we just can look at how many seniors over sixty-five that we have to, in order to project that the number of potential beneficiaries will lower the age to sixty-five. Even though, um, they need to have a mean tested for sixty-five, there are a lot of seniors who not apply. So what is this scenario about sixty-five to ninety? There's no, we can, sixty-five to sixty-nine, so we can't tell. So we don't have composite statistics. Remember that, that the beginning, well, back in the seventies, the old age allowance was set at sixty-five. Back then, the government won't, and the later years have, uh, uh, tightened it to seventy. Why has it been tightened? Why do you have to impose a condition when you reach sixty-five? I have four minutes left? Yes. Would we have such data or the information on hand on a discussion back then? So from my memory, at the beginning, there would as trial at sixty-five, after some discussion that they will, uh, will lowered. And however, it, um, it had not been adjusted since. And in my previous reply, we had not considered further lowering it. Next, Mister Lo Chong Hong.
And on dementia is a public concern in my reply to one ninety-one. I'm disappointed with the government response and alarmed. And my first three questions that for the number of dementia patients by the gender and breakdown and the app, and the applied figures, and how many of them are lived in subsidized hostel or different residential host or care cases? And the government had not provide any answer or had not collated the relevant data that for the social department had failed to not have collected any information on a disease of public concern. So will the government, uh, consider doing a general survey? Because the society thinks the calculated about, uh, over a hundred thousand, it might reach to three hundred thousand in the future. Can the government consider a forecast or doing a general survey to meet the future needs? My impression is that the government just, um, uh, food the way through. So it's just, um, simply, um, uh, make up as they go. However, for the concerned groups, for the early onset cases, um, there is, there is simply insufficient care. The government response, uh, uh, who has claimed that the dementia community support scheme has been launched and only provided in the elderly centers. However, for the early onset cases, the onset age actually happens before fifty or sixty years old. Since they're not qualified to enter the elderly centers, well, they can't become a member of those centers, they're not entitled to use those services. For the early onset cases, um, what can the government do for them? I hope that the secretary, first, they have to do a survey. And second, to care for the early onset cases. And I hope to have some designated service instead of integrated service. Secretary. When the members raise their question and then we have to look whether S W G have collated such data, I have to tell you that the S W G does not collate the relevant information. And you can use the twenty sixteen C U H K survey that for the different age groups of dementia cases and based on today's population figures to make projections. This is merely a projection, but not the data collected based on our service usage. So in our response, we have to be, uh, answer what the information we have. As for the early onset cases, uh, maybe I'm doing not yet a reach sixty. And in the past, we have looked into it and we are aware that this is a public concern. And through the dementia community support scheme, pilot scheme, when we regularize it, at this stage, um, at the, we hope that at the district level, we can help these sort of cases or suspected cases. For those who not yet to reach sixty, that's another policy issue. So in the future, we can look into it with members. Just made a follow-up, that would the government consider doing a survey in the short term? Because you don't have the relevant data, you can only take reference with the C U H K survey. We don't have plans of that just yet. Next, Mister Ko Weikang.
Two questions. Reply, uh, two in twenty-six, about the C S A elderly from sixty to sixty-five. Even though those who are on it is not affected, however, um, how many of those who are sixty to sixty-four, we need to live in residential homes? So within, there's about seventy-eight percent of the entire, um, demo group. So for due to our physical conditions or family circumstances, they'll need to live in residential homes. And they're not able to get the elderly C S S A to pay for the residential homes. How, is there an exemption in place? And, um, two, next to question two forty-two. On the, um, uh, O A A and the public security and the payments beside the Guangdong scheme, since from this April, there'll be the Fujian scheme. And they're only qualified for the old age living allowance of over a one thousand dollars. And since the mainland economy is growing at a remarkable speed. So, um, the living standards is on the rise. With that amount of money, they probably have a hard existence there. When will the government consider incorporating old age living allowance into the Fujian and Guangdong scheme? There's only about over ten thousand people qualified, which is a lump to figure. How do we ensure there are, have reasonable living standards and achieve parity with those living in Hong Kong? Uh, um, for the first question, can the Director of Social Welfare answer that for us? And, um, Mister Kwakwakam mentioned that if they are physically conditioned and need to be admitted to residential homes. Under the C S S A scheme, we have a separate category that, um, for those in ill health, um, though, which will receive more than the standard amount of C S S A. And so they don't need to worry about that. For this, so sixty to sixty-four, if they continue to meet their requirements, I would see, there was to qualify for C S S A. So, um, there will be an, um, extra supplement, not applicable. If they are in ill health, we have a separate category in place for them. As for the second part of the question, as we, we know, know that, um, we just launched the Fujian scheme. So we look into, um, the figures and the how, unfolding of the Fujian and Guangdong scheme. Because currently, um, for the Bay Area in terms of retirement and healthcare are the major points of concern. For the entire Guangdong province, the number of Hong Kong residents, there's, um, is around over half a million. About forty to fifteen percent of them are being the elderly. So that we will care about, um, the, um, conditions of the permanent residents of in mainland. Next question, Doctor Fernando Chou. Um, the elderly need, for those who need long-term care, while they're not able to receive public care at home, they will be sent to residential homes. However, um, there's a long waiting list, very long waiting list for the residential homes. I ask this question every year, that how many people passed away while waiting for these places? This year, we have reached a new high. Last year, we have, uh, we have over sixty-one hundred people passed away. Well, well, this year, as for last year, we have over sixty-two hundred deaths on the waiting, while on the waiting list. So, um, today, um, Hong, Hong, they contributed to Hong Kong current prosperity. When they turn old and then somehow they couldn't get a priority into admitted residential homes. Last year, um, we have two hundred forty-two new subsidized places. And to twenty eighteen nineteen, there'll be two hundred and two new places. So we have over six thousand deaths per year while waiting for these places. So after for the elderly services program plan, and we done all the planning. And yet today, we have more and more, um, deaths while waiting for the places. So when can you provide enough long-term care attention in places? When they're not capable, so that when they're not capable of taking care of themselves, they can, um, they're being cared of properly. Secretary.
Um, um, that some, the elderly people while on the waiting list for the residential home places will provide community care places for them. As for the community care places, there is some waiting time. However, um, the queue is much shorter than that waiting for the residential home places. However, that doesn't mean that they're not provided any service while on the waiting list. Um, Doctor Chou is already well familiar with the E P R P P and they will complete it within this year. For example, we have to amend the Hong Kong Planning Standard and Guidelines. We hope that, um, for the future developments, there will be accommodation for elderly care facilities or residential home facilities. And this such planning has completed last, middle of last year. There are still some procedures in place, amending the H K P S G. So it will take time for the planning to show results. I'm sure that you can repeat what I said in the
I'm sure that you can repeat what I said in the welfare affairs panel. Um and let's not have the secretary repeat himself.
Now for elderly waiting for R C H Gs, we're giving them service. There are about thirty five thousand ac- active cases under the waiting list. For these um about six thirty six thousand people, what kind of community care services are they receiving? And how many are receiving such service? Well, I'm not sure if I have the information at hand. I wonder if the deputy director uh director has the information. For elderly people waiting for residential care home places. Um while they are on the waiting list, we will suggest some daycare services to them. And that includes some home services or some day activity day center services. Especially and they are still undergoing an assessment that both types of services are suitable or they need only um in- institutional services. Then usually we will make arrangement for the services. And for elderly waiting for um homes, elderly care homes, they could still join the voucher scheme. Now that's that's nonsense. There are some thirty thousand thirty thousand uh three thousand seven hundred places waiting for daycare centers places. And you have just about three thousand five hundred places. So there are thirty six thousand waiting for the daycare center services. And there are just three thousand odd day center places. So thirty six thousand people waiting for the three thousand places. And home services, seven thousand places, but then there's a waiting list of five thousand. So what are you talking about when you say you're giving them service? Just come clean. We have a serious shortage of services. That's um um misplanning and also that's um dereliction of duty. Now, three thousand places and and the waiting list to thirty thousand. You could have just said ten percent, there's no need for you to say so much, it means nothing. Uh but perhaps it's not ten percent, maybe you add other services is more. But anyway, the the key point is there is serious shortage of services, so we all need to make progress. Yes, I I we all get that. For those reserving receiving day care services or or so on. Well, it's not necessarily the case that they are on the waiting list, but we don't actually have the figures at hand here. Mister Michael Tian. Uh Doctor Law Chi Kwong is very committed. I won't say you uh have committed dereliction of duty, but whether you're compassionate or not, I'm not so sure. Now, I since I've become a member, very often, double income family parents will stop me on the street to tell me that for the childcare service, it doesn't really help them at all. Because say they are at work, there's no way for them to collect the children um from um the school and then send them to the childcare service center. So so it doesn't matter or or the after school care services, so there's no point. And and schools, I've talked to schools. They said if there are NGOs coming to provide service, it's fine, we can let them use our premises. The children can then stay at school and the parents could pick them up after work and that would be great. Now, I know there will be recurrent spending, but I've been asking about it at the Commission on Poverty. And it seems that the Community Care Fund doesn't want to take it up. And then I approached the Financial Secretary directly, I asked, suggested a fund. May you know, you know, maybe use a billion dollars or so to set a fund and then the annual income would be enough. And then they say, no, that we haven't heard this from from the Revenue Bureau. And then I approached the Secretary for Education and he said it's a good idea. And then he said we'll take it up with the Labor and Welfare Bureau. So now we are with you here, the Labor and Welfare Bureau. I understand you have some personal views. Uh I'm sure after you've um given me the answer, I would have used up the four minutes or perhaps I'll pursue the matter on another matter. But I'm just trying to tell you the F S is compassionate, the Secretary for Education is compassionate, and I hope you would also consider it sooner or later. L W B three two four. The um uh I asked whether there's a scope to increase the um fee. Now for um organizations providing the service, they tell me there is now an increasing amount. Some children have to wait three, four months, they couldn't find the the people to do it. Because you just pay them eighteen to twenty two dollars per hour, it's far lower than minimum wage. Of course, no one is interested. So I don't quite get it. And you make such an effort to find people who would look after children. Why wouldn't you increase the um fee at least to the minimum wage level? Or if you could give them, um that is the incentive payment for child carers. If you give them, pay them for the transportation fee as well, then the um child carriers could pick up the children from school. And then parents only need to pick up the children from the child carriers after work. If you could um expand this program, actually, maybe it could take the place of the school-based childcare service that I'm I've also suggested. But of course, for child carriers to go and pick up children from schools, they have to be paid for transportation. And then there's also need to take out insurance for the single journey. So I've come up with a compromise for you, Secretary, at least. Can you undertake today that you will look into this? Secretary. I've been very polite. Now for uh the school after school care program, uh as a school-based ones. While the Community Care Fund has worked with certain groups to provide a service in phase one, phase two. Now, I can only answer the question from memory. I think the there were over one hundred schools, but then it dropped to seventy nine secondary and primary schools. You know, there are a thousand schools in Hong Kong, but only um so few schools can want to do this. Because the teachers have to be provided to do the administration work. And schools told me if you don't need the teachers, then they are perfectly happy with the arrangement. Now, I understand, I remember in most cases, uh there are NGOs providing staff. They did not use any school resources at all. Of course, they work with schools, so there has to be some work on the part of schools as partners. As for the um uh neighbor childcare scheme, that's a different concept. Here, we're talking about a form of voluntary service in the community. Now, if you're saying that let's not tire, uh let's not find volunteers, but rather in a community. Maybe you should um look for part-time child carriers and the concept is totally different. Of course, the community could debate it. Well, Secretary, that's a very creative. I fully agree, could you consider it, please? Well, I'm sure we can discuss it. Yes, that's brilliant. Mister Shu Kuchun. Paragraph one of the speaking notes. In twenty eighteen to nineteen, government recurrent spending on social welfare and humans women's interests is seventy eight nine point eight billion dollars. Only second to spending on education that shows the government's commitment to the disadvantage. So yes, in terms of uh resources, we we see that. What about manpower? Now, there's a report on um a twenty sixteen report on manpower planning for the social welfare sector, but but does that report still mean anything? Okay, you have set aside so much resources, but you have enough people to execute the plans. Yesterday, at the City University, that was the case. There was a group of alumni and students having to defend the part-time um social work program. Uh because C D U will abandon will abolish the part-time program. There are some six to seven thousand diploma social workers won't be able to earn higher qualifications. So it's a matter about manpower planning. Now, you have the resources to spend on welfare, but you don't have them, you don't have any manpower planning. And then you say you can't hire people, then you say you you just can't spend the money, but then it's not your fault. Now, you describe. There are forty thousand plus um social workers, about um four thousand six hundred are degree holders, or six thousand so also are degree diploma holders. So what is the point of citing these figures? What do they mean? The other is the navigation scheme. Um reply two seven three. The government launched the navigation scheme on um for young persons' care services. Um there are fifteen hundred places, only seventy one have graduated and two hundred plus have abandoned the course. There are just about two hundred uh huh one hundred and seventy eight who are still in the program. So are there any measures so these hundred and seventy eight will finish the program? And then it will stay in a sector to work as carriers. And that's because that's what the objective of the navigation scheme is. And do you have any indicators, performance indicators for your scheme? My third question is on the childcare on carriers. Reply uh two seven two. Now, since twenty fifteen, the there are measures to support the carriers, that's their pilot schemes on living allowance and also their um um home programs. But this year, are you going to review the scheme? That is the pilot scheme on living allowance for carriers of elderly persons from low-income families and pilot scheme on living allowance for low-income carriers of persons with disabilities that will expire uh in September this year. Would you also come up with a complete policy to support carriers? Twenty sixteen, the manpower report for the social welfare sector. That's mostly to look at um the manpower situation of in the social work sector. And we also try to project the manpower supply in the next five years. Now, in the report, there is no not the term planning. Uh in the twenty sixteen report, it referred to figures before twenty fifteen and projections are made. But so the report serves as reference. Let's say this year, we want to provide more uh social services, we need the manpower supply. Then we we can just refer to the report and we know what the manpower situation is like. As for the navigation scheme is true, um there's a lot of movements about those in the scheme. But then if you look at the employment figures for young people in a whole, then there there is also a lot of fluctuation. So of course, we'll see if there's any way we can improve the navigation scheme for young persons in care services. As for the pilot program, our living allowance for carriers of elderly and persons with disabilities will complete the review at the end of this year. Well, we uh the scheme will come to an end before the end of the year and they will review it and see what we need to do in future.
On the En Chang's question to Secretary. And for the non mean testing age of O A A to sixty five. And the secretary was adamant that um he had not considered it. And um your answer disappointed a lot of seniors and so am and myself as well. And this is not the first time that me and Chang raises. And during the Chief President Q and A session, I recall that um some other members asked a question, written or oral question. More than one occasions or multiple occasions, rather. So we have this aspiration, simply not out of thin air, but simply a uh that we have all seniors coming up to us and asking us to lobby on their behalf. And the secretary has been, I know that you'd be allowed research on retirement protection. And the society does have a need for universal retirement protection. And which replied to this senior that we have to resolve the money issue for the universal protect retirement protection and the time is not right. And the government preferred spending for those who needed. When the government improved its finances, um the care for the elderly will um improve as well. However, and I was questioned that since the government is so a lot of money, so why can't we lower the qualifying age for O A A? We're not requesting so much when you actually afford can afford so. Why do you not consider the non-mean testing O A to sixty five, which is a very uh humble or a reasonable request? And since the seniors have contributed so much to society, the government can afford to pay a thousand per month so that he could have some money for buying fruit. And regardless of the income, you would not consider rule that out even with a considering number. So is that your philosophy that um the the senior should not be entitled to this money? Or any other reasons that make you rule that out completely? So I wish to want to debate with you on this. So um the mem- on the members' question, even though I haven't gone through the records four decades ago. I believe that the uh there'll be discussion unless go four decades ago. This is not a new issue at the Welfare Service Panel or on different occasions. On the issue of O H allowance, I'm sure there'll be um more a dozen or two dozens debate. And the position was unchanged for the past four decades. The age set at seventy, even though and you may say that the O A A is one of the element of the retirement protection. However, you can claim that this is not a significant one, is for our more senior elderly, for those over seventy. So we claim that what it used to be, not many people lived through of past sixty seventy, this is nothing new now. And in response to the members' question. Uh we are facing an aging population, especially um the growth in those over sixty five. So for any decisions made, especially on the lowering of the qualifying age, um we have to be very careful. Or I can even say that in the future, when the government it considering um raising the age gradually, whom we are more likely for the twenty sixteen seventeen our uh la- longevity have increased by zero point four years. For every three years or or less or so, that our longevity will be extended by a year. So um we have to be uh concerned about the impact of government finances instead of looking at the current finances. So it has been changed for four decades, isn't it worth looking into it? So um the finances is always tough. If it's reasonable, we should pursue it and then we can considering um bring have paying rep paying for it. I can't convince the elderly to buy into your explanation. So it's been unchanged for four decades, isn't it time for rethink supplement? I can only reiterate that we can to consider this, that there was the entitlement age for the benefits and and to uh look in view of the ri- rising um age limits. Mister Kwong Chan Yu. So um so um so if this unchanged for fifty years, we unchanged for this this livelihood policy should deserve a rethink. So the um non-mean tested O A A, a lot of controversy, they said, um can we set it at sixty five or so? On the other hand, I'm going to follow up on a reply O ninety one on the old age living allowance. So this one, I'm handing out leaflets and Yin Long. And I I got pepper with questions to hope to get the department figures on the district breakdown. And if we hope to have the benefit more seniors that would what what the extra public expenditure involved. If we can do the math that we can that may put qualify. So for a couple to be entitled for O A L A over two thousand dollars, they well cannot exceed that limit per month. So let's see what the husband at sixty five wouldn't be qualified for O A L A. I know the wife is still working and yet they'll be disappointed. Because um their asset, well, as we're hearing publicly hearing, that they're set as um one hundred forty six thousand dollars, the asset limit. So but ask this the secretary. So for the asset limit and the monthly um income threshold. If we can urge the us more entitled, we must need to help the figures. If you set the limit at one hundred forty six thousand dollars, though frankly, a lot of the elderly maybe together. Well, it's not surprising you have this cut amount for those who are sixty five. It work well, you can't uh set the um couple income as twelve thousand dollars, this is too low. It's a and there's a very stringent asset on limit. Is there any room to benefit more seniors, Secretary? Is there any room to benefit more seniors, secretary? And on the asset limit, you can claim this is a historic figure adjusted by inflation. And when we at the O A L A in twenty twelve, back then we take reference with the twenty twelve that the, um, the income of the recipients of L A A as well, their asset limit in determining the limit. So it shows that some years ago for those sixty to sixty five in doing a mean testing and income testing mechanism extend to this day. As for which figure is higher? I think the income level is actually high. If you annualize the asset, it will be actually be a few thousand dollars a month. As we all know that there are few pillars in the retirement protection, one of which is the mandatory property fund. When M P F matures, the retirees may have a hundred thousands or even a few million of income. However, in that one scenario, is that they only have six digits in savings and not entitled to any benefits. And wealth, when the government launched the public annuity scheme, they will consider that for the seniors of those hundred thousand in savings, some of them, if they put into the public annuity and under an existing policy, and the O A L A will exclude the income, the nominal value of the interest product as income. When we adopt this policy on the public, the annuity, the seniors only part of the savings into the public annuity, they'll meet the asset limit of the higher way L A and be entitled to subsidy. So that will be all for them better, which protection, Ms. Claudia Mo. Question two, seven, one, oh. Well, almost claims that the government should enhance the care for the person with disabilities. However, in Hong Kong, there are over a hun, hundred seventy thousand people were visually impaired. And estimate about seventeen, seventeen hundred or as almost close to blind or already blind that would require guide dog services. And somehow, it's still offered on a self financing basis. It was only offered by two organizations. So they would come to you, then they will provide them with funding. However, it's limited to the promotion. What I found shocking was that for twenty sixteen and seventeen, the government has shot a series of A P I's on guide dog services. The amount is about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So if using that money for the promotion, is it really effective? Well, I have doubts about it. Well, the amount is alarming. Why don't you tell the government to amend the legislation? Currently, guide dogs were, their demand is seventeen hundred and yet there are less than fifty in place. So if you're spending four hundred sixty thousand to promote it and yet there are fifty guide dogs in service. And how about the training? The legislation claims that the guide dogs and his owner can, can be transported and enter restaurant in public places. And yet the trainer of the guide dog, while in training, they have to train the dog how to get on the bus, what does their Hong Kong bus look like? Um, the law wouldn't allow this. And yet they can't train the dog and it could not become a working dog. And yet we're only less, about less than fifty of those, while the actual demand is seventeen hundred guide dogs. And then the government spend hundreds of thousands to launch a series of I P I. This is all meaningless. To truly help the visually impaired, can you amend the legislation or considering doing so, secretary please? And on the promoting their work of guide dogs, we need to step up instead of considering whether we're giving too much money. So what I, actually, I found the amount is rather low. So let me have the rehabilitation commissioner to take the question. Mr. David Liu. And on the promotion of guide dogs, the government APIs was taken after to think about the users. He, he's deliberately evading my question is, so using ten, hundred thousand people tell, promoting the service and yet the availability of the service itself is very low. I'm asking, can you consider amending the legislation? Why are you repeating from the beginning? I afraid we're running out of time. Okay, can you provide more concise answer? The chairman is always the smartest. Besides launching APIs on the district level, we have, where actual work carried out. And in response to the request of guide dog associations, we're working with A F C D on guide dogs identification so that the public can identify guide dogs. And for the housing department, and they have provide a lot of facilitation measures. And so that the guide dogs can help the owner while in an H D premises. And we will continue to take this forward. And for the legislation amendment, the E O's Paul Obtikus Commission had offered such proposals as well. And currently inside the government, we are carefully looking into the enforcement details as well as the impact of different stakeholders. Thank you, chairman, Mr. Dr. Chen Chong Tai. Um, the reply is almost zero, one, oh. On N X B, to supplement the details on the public research scheme. And one of the important point that's do not replied in depth, that one, the enhancement of the lump sum grant system. And last year, um, the lump sum grant subvention system was under public, much credit, public criticism. And for the review that we're not seeing some concrete arrangements. I hope the bureau can explain that why the consultation would take on in focus group or sector exchange sessions. Looking at other government departments, especially all the commission, and that last year, all the commission's report, they have a considerable criticism on the, which a lot of the N G Os are suffering losses under the lump sum system, which has to do with the operation performances. And last year, the neighborhood advisory council layoffs due to miscalculation and, and, and stoppage of services at the Tongsheng Neighborhood Center. They all comes back to that the current lump sum grant subvention system, which is a pitfall, especially the management of N G Os has been exposed. And beginning of this year, um, the senior ranks and granting himself salary while squeezing the junior staff have been subject to a lot of criticism. And for the enhancement of the lump sum grant subvention system reviews, what is the bureau arrangements on that? And on the evaluation of the lump sum grant system, the director of the social welfare will already set up a review group on that. And they will come to the welfare effort panel to provide account on the progress. Well, after this meeting, we will begin in earnest on the review and if necessary, to appoint consultancy to carry the research. So the director of so, was social welfare to supplement. And for the review committee, since we convened last September, um, have a plan to come to the welfare service panel in May and for the public hearing for the sector to express their views. As for the members mentioned that all the focus group and other arrangements, this is not purely a, a task force. We hope to invite the sector that in the course of review, which we have to express views on the eight designated areas. And each time, we will invite all the relevant stakeholders. And so for the consultancy study, after we determine the scope, the task force had agreed that one part will be led by the S W D to take, to engage in research. And some of them will, will be entrusted to consultancies. And they will start with the sector. After they made public hearing, they will all begin in full speed. So I would like to follow up on the consultancy arrangements. And well, you claims that yet to engage consultants. I see there's a lot of criticism for this. Um, if you use, engage the sector, they will just have someone to vote to attend. So how would the consultant is able to manage to carry the study in a fair and impartial manner? Though the consultants will be professionals and we will conduct investigation and interviews or conduct site visits to provide us with data. And for the eventual discourse, will comes back on this independent review task force. And this task was automated up at different stakeholders in the sector. For example, Lexcom members, that H K C S S and the, and the service users and organizations and employee reps as, as well as, um, uh, independent figures from all sector societies. So it all comes back to the task force. Next, Dr. K K Kwok. One, two, three, three, one, two, three, four, on the elderly.
Each year, we ask for these figures from the administration and it's always pathetic. Now, we're asking about those on the waiting list for care homes, places for the elderly. Three thousand, thirty, one thousand people on the waiting list and the time could be nine over my months and for care and attention homes. I know, I, I, there's also a large number on the waiting list. So we can see that the government has done nothing to reduce the waiting list. Now, this government wants to be proactive, we know, so we're told. But how do you tell us? Well, perhaps I put it this way, in your, within your term, do you have a specific target to resolve the waiting list issue? Now, we see elderly people passing away while waiting for service. Even though for those wanting community care service, they have to wait thirty months, fourteen months. So it's a long wait for either institutional care or community care. Elderly, the elderly feel so helpless and you can't help them. Matthew Jung. Um, callously called those sixty five or so, young, old. So you don't want to help them, you force them to go to work. Now, fine, if you want, ask, want to encourage them to work, but you have to say, take care of their health and you must put restrictions on jobs that might exploit them or you do matching for jobs that's suitable for elderly age sixty five. But you don't have any such services. And so by encouraging the work, you just make their life more miserable. So what are you going to do to help them within the next four years in your term? Secretary. Elderly care homes and young, old people taking out employment, how are the two related? Sorry, I don't get that. Well, those are two separate questions, they're not related, so it's up to you to answer them. Now, at the panel on welfare services, I provided information to members. It usually takes eight to eleven years to build a residential care home for the elderly. So it is more or less the same as for building public housing. For R C H E's completed in next few years, the decision was made in the last or even the government before the last one. For, for this term, the government, it want to increase supply, then this probably will only come up the soonest in the next term of the government or even the term after the next term. Now, every year, we need to build, let's say, for standard one hundred person elderly care home. Uh, in each year, we will need to build six to seven. And from, based on past resources deployed in past, we, in each year, each year, we can build two to three homes. So there is a high chance that the waiting list for elderly care homes will increase, will, will lengthen. So we keep increasing the supply of residential care homes. At the same time, we want to provide community care services. There are two aspects, one is the daycare services mentioned by Dr. Fernando Jung earlier. Now, we have, there is also many waiting for community care services. Average waiting time is thirty months, that's why we are actively identifying sites for providing more days care services. As for home based services, the bottleneck is not so much, is really to do with manpower. Uh, the vacancy rate is about eighty percent in the centers. Now, sometimes they, these places hire hourly paid staff or part time staff to rent a team. So we need to increase the median pay by two points. We want to provide additional resources to subvented bodies so they could increase pay. And then they could attract more to join them and retain existing staff as well in providing the needed services. Now, we have a pilot scheme on, um, after, a, a, a care after discharge or pilot program to help elderly who are in firm. Um, the N G Os express concern, even though if you give them money, are they able to hire the people to provide the services? So that's the concern they've expressed. Mr. Pierre Chen. O three, four. I C C M W. The Integrated Committee Centers for Mental Wellness, they were set up in twenty ten by the social welfare department, much resources were spent in providing services. Now, in the reply three, it says that the S W D has sized twenty, thirty six centers, sixteen, twenty four centers. Um, some have areas lower than the standard. Eight have total floor area above the standard. Fifteen operating permanent premises for, uh, have size reserved. So I want to know how many centers don't meet the space standard for others? And how many need to rent additional space so they can meet the standard? That's the first question about hardware, because we're spending so much money. Can the service, is the money spent on services to the community or is it spent on paying rent? And then table one and table two, the twenty four centers, apart from the hardware, what about the performance involving software? I want to ask about twenty four centers, but instead replies given by district. And on the S W D website, there's a separate list for I C C Ws by centers, not by district. So it's impossible to give a break. So it's impossible to give a breakdown by centers rather than by district. So it's really all a matter of audit. Can I invite the Deputy Director of Social Welfare to answer the question? Thank you. We have twenty-four ICCMWs. And twenty have permanent premises. And fifteen are already operating in permanent premises. Five still undergoing fitting out work. And when fitting out work is completed, then the operation can start. Then there are other three with sites reserved as permanent premises. For one center, we're still doing local consultation with identified site. So there are remaining four out of twenty-four, for which we have not yet identified sites. Because we need to provide the service. So we have discussed, agreed with the NGOs. That they could rent commercial premises for the activities. Of course, there are other groups which can use their own sites and we support their initiative. So as I said, there are four centers still looking for permanent sites and we're helping them with the search. For the twenty-four centers, we could group them by the administrative districts of, under the district council. No, I'm talking, I'm not talking about by district. I'm saying there are twenty-four separate centers. Instead, you group them by district. You could ask for short follow-up if you wish. Well, in reply to my first question, you said something else again. I'm talking about the twenty-four centers, I want to know how effective they are. How many are on permanent premises? How many have met the standards? And how much they've spent on rent and so on? Now, in my written reply, you answer one thing. In my oral reply, you answer another thing, but still not the answer I'm looking for. So the simple question is, should be a list of twenty-four centers. So you give a breakdown by the centers. So I just want information for each center. Three, three, four. Like many members, I'm concerned about the waiting time for elderly people for elderly care homes. In the past three years, we see more elderly passing away while waiting for service than elderly managing to get a place at the homes. The secretary said that under normal circumstances, we can only see the outcome of your effort in the next term of government or even the term after the next term. So does it mean that you cannot give top priority to this case? Why is it that this problem has dragged on for so many years? Is it true that we have to wait another two terms of government before you see results? That's the first question. Second question is about manpower. Fifty-one. I asked about the navigation scheme. For young persons in care services, I don't know if this scheme is a good one or not. There are fifteen hundred places, but only about seven, half of the places are taken up. And for those, the pay after training, there's an increase. The latest is ten thousand, six hundred plus dollars. But for those recruited openly, the pay is already sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars. While, yes, you may say this is just training attachment. But once they take a post, they will be made to work like a full-time staff. Maybe because the training pay is so low, that's why you can't attract people to join the scheme? And definitely you can't retain them, is that the case?
Well, couldn't think of any other ways to expedite it. And to come up with new residential homes. It takes time to identify the sites, consult the community, and get consent at the district and the DC. And then we allocate resources building it. So the whole process takes time. Even, we need, do that, it will only complete the projects about a decade from now. Whether we can buy existing premises to do this is quite difficult. Even though we not rule out the scenario, how for a RCHEs, you talk about twenty or thirty thousand square foot in space. And for the private homes, they are, oh, we have to wait for the, wait for the old buildings to move out. We had never do this before, can we consider it? And for our private buildings over the commercial portion to this, only restricted by the mutual confidence. And the government doing this will be additional difficulty. So in the short run, it's very difficult to greatly boost the number of RCHE places. And for the navigation scheme for young persons in care services, in terms of renumeration, we need to look at the effectiveness. So the renumeration will be looked into as well. However, those enrolled in the navigation scheme, and they actually will need to take time out for training while on the job. So it's not, it's a full-time stop, which all this time we spend workings. Said, all the sectors, I mean, hoping for more young people to join, so we'll work towards it. Next, Dr. Fernando Jung. So the secretary claimed that it will take time to see the results of what we're doing. So the disasters were stemmed from the previous administration, while the officials involved have since retired. So they've been inactive and then the elderly are suffering. And now they claim you're working on it. And yet, we not, untended we need to boost some community support, then do it then. And the daycare centers, there are, will have an increase of a dozen or a hundred places per year. And the home-based care services will be increased by hundreds at most a year. We talk about tens of thousands of elderly in need. So together with the enhanced home-based care services, there's at least five thousand places. So you claim that you can be aging at home. However, for every one dollar spent on home-based services, you spent seven dollars on the residential home care services. So it's just the other way around all these years. So COVID was wrong, that for the past three years, the deaths, those on the waiting list passed more than those allocated places. It had always been this way. Of course, we have more and more death this year because things is going in a snail phase. In the past, there's been no planning. And now they're taking it forward and claiming insufficient manpower and land shortage and just blaming everything else. So when it comes to innovation technology and for the HMB bridge, you may as well, you can't just blame insufficient land and money. You just reclaim the land then. So for the new rail lines, you just bulldoze your way through. However, it comes to care for the elderly and the person with disabilities, nothing much was done. And the waiting list for the RSHDs getting longer and longer. And for the preschool children with special education needs. And Carrie Lam claimed that the, ordered the lottery fund had provided onsite rehabilitation services and only came to the forty percent of the waiting list. And now there are still nine thousand or ten thousand children on the waiting list. I wish over a thousand of those is waiting for the special needs child center. This cannot be serviced by the onsite rehabilitation service scheme. They require a special venue and special childcare services. What happened to them? They're still waiting. So the total quarter is about eighteen hundred per year. And yet, we have seventeen hundred on the waiting list. These are the children below six. They have a severe disability, require early intervention, they have already been diagnosed. What are you gonna do about this? Can you answer it for me? So you're blaming everyone, everything. And responding to the question on the special needs childcare center. And all these years, we have a new development area. Would try to have the setup of the special childcare centers. In the future, there will be a new centers established. And for the development NGO site, there will be a priority area. Which will try to allow for more resources for children with special education needs from zero to six. Of course, they will, they always get to respond, they always claim to try their best. Can you give us a plan, when the queue can be cleared? Do we have a goal? Currently, we're conducting some analysis. I believe that we've completed the analysis. And the planning of these services, I believe that we can give it account to Ledgeco of the outcome of the analysis and the relevant information. I can't tell today. For example, in the policy address, we are aiming for the zero waiting time. So for, how, what can we do in our existing services to achieve zero waiting time? When we complete this study, we will come to Ledgeco. Next, Dr. Shu Kachin. I would feel follow-up on Dr. Cheng Chong Kai's question on the Lumsom Subvention System Review. And the Director of Social Welfare claims that it had began on November last year and have the task force on it. And coming May, they will come to the Welfare Service Panel. And after conducting public hearing, they will have, the study will be released in two years. This is fact. At the same time in the panel, were Mr. Leung Chi Chung. And Mr. Lo Chong Hong and Dr. Fernando Jung and me as the members of the Welfare Service Panel. Just now, the government just announced that the Steering Committee on the Lumsom Subvention Committee, then the membership, about seventeen non-official members with no Ledgeco members. Even, I'm the chairman of the Welfare Service Panel, even though I'm the member for the Social Welfare constituency. Even though my predecessor was in the Steering Committee. Even I wasn't, if not involved. However, the members, for example, Lo Chong Hong and Dr. Fernando Jung and Leung Chong Hong. Of other members, of all the members who cared about the Lumsom grant, they're not being invited to join the Steering Committee. So what is the consideration behind this? And response, reply oh, five, four. And on the CSSA Domestic Removal Grant. And it claims that the CSSA recipients will need to apply to the Social Welfare Department. And the domestic removal grant is granted according to the type of home premises as well as the qualifying household family members and was set in the grant amount. However, not all CSSA recipients entitled this amount. For the able-bodied adult and children, it's not qualified for this domestic removal grant. So it's, so in the rising rate, only the old and the person with disabilities, CSSA recipient would need moving, like others. And for the community housing sharing scheme. And for those who need to evict out industrial building to actually entitle to domestic removal grant. While the government favoring one were over another, that for the adults and children needed to be removed and giving them such stringent treatment or so mean to them. And for the Steering Committee on the Lumsom Grant Review. This time, some of the members have served their six-year term. And if we, and have to identify other candidates. And usually, we look into the sector in looking for similar candidates. As for Mr., after, and after Mr. Cheng Guo Chi left the Steering Committee, there have been no Ledgeco members involved. That I can't respond, reply. Secretary is reached correct, the membership list just announced of the seventeen non-official members. Only four of them have been reappointed, thirteen of them are newly appointed. Of the thirteen new appointees, none of them are Ledgeco members. They're not necessarily come to welfare sector, that no, no one from the Ledgeco isn't represented. The director reminded me that the, Mr. Cheng Guo Chi has took, joined the Steering Committee as the social, the social workers association. You should claim that the community care person capacity doesn't represent the organization. And yet, you're claiming they represent an organization. Like Mr. Kwong Chan Yu. And I would think the secretary answered my next question. Can the secretary capable of remembering the names of six hundred odd people? I believe that it might be challenging for me to remember sixty-something people, sixty-odd people, name a note. So I don't have much of a good audio memory unless I look at the names in writing. I don't think I can remember six hundred names. For a secretary of hundreds, IQ one sixty can, can remember the names of six hundred people. Respond to our reply number one seventy-two. And all the kindergarten social workers on the ratio of one to six hundred students. And we have to execute demonstrations that the secretary of IQ one sixty have probably handling sixty names. According to the median ratio. For the trial scheme, one social worker may need to take care of four kindergartens. Because some of the kindergartens may have less students. So in this condition, how can we provide a quality social worker support? If you are, need to serve more than four schools? Chairman, when we come with this one to six hundred ratio, it's just an indicative. So our primary thinking is not based on a ratio. Instead, that in phases, we tend to provide preschool social worker service, how to we take it forward. So on a substantial perspective, this is like the first time we're providing services to childcare center and kindergartens. So that's why we're using this money from the lottery fund to conduct the pilot scheme. However, the medium figure you're talking about, let's say, there are over a hundred students per kindergarten. However, for those, it would get to five hundred or six hundred or over a thousand students. There are kindergarten as having as twenty students. So for this social welfare department, we'll work with the operators to see how we should go forward. So maybe having a big kindergarten match with the smaller one. Because quite, most kindergartens probably have fifty kindergartens. We can't have one social workers to take care of twelve kindergartens. So the actual motives of Randy, we'll need to negotiate with the kindergartens and the service providers. I hope that you can understand why the ratios one to five hundred, one to three hundred, one to one thousand. We're not talking about, about that every student itself could be, become odd cases. Come with developmental, more the parent issues and so on, one of the group work or some of them, individual cases. Don't need to remember the names of every students. If not, can't remember the names of each one of them. Okay, so I'm pointing at that, when I'm didn't care of sixteen people, we're not talking about one school, one social worker. About one social worker for N number of schools. So we're simply learning after so many tragedies in providing social workers for kindergartens. So it seemed, you're screwing up at the outset by having one worker to six hundred workers. I'm a social worker myself. I'm a social worker myself. So if I have to visit so many schools for seven days a week, I don't, I don't even have enough time. For the ratio of one to six hundred, uh this is not a mandatory figure. However, uh your idea is that one-six hundred is not even workable. If we can't remember the names, so what are we gonna do? Is that the acceptable approach? Can we have a concise response on that? Um secretary, I don't have answer at this point. So um on this cases, the social worker tried hard to identify each social user. As for whether you had to um matching the faces to the names, I think it's quite demanding of social worker. It's just a matter we have committed or not, the social workers are really great, actually remember the names of the users. Now we have six hundred for each one, if we can't remember sixty, then you would know the secretary can't handle. So how are we gonna handle six hundred cases? I hope that you can go back to consider it. Dr. Pi Ah Chan. A reply on uh O three five. On the multi- oh case conferences. Uh so um you can see the question and the responses being uh quite brilliant. On the multidisciplinary case conference on protection child with suspected abuse, the answer is that the HA does not have statistical information on attendance of HA reps on MDCs. So I look up online. So who sit on these MDCs? I asked the FWB on uh child abuse or child psychiatry cases and claimed they don't have such figures. They don't have a breakdown, they don't know um the expenditure or the manpower deployment. And now I come to this uh session of the meeting, can I ask the LWB for the figures? And the response is brilliant and they um they referred back to me to HA or F uh F FHB. So I asked FWB, they asked me to go to LWB. And we asked LWB to ask me to go back to FHB. So what I'm gonna do. So it's nobody seems to care but child abuse cases, so you dump them in the hospitals to handle them. So what is your role, the social welfare department and presidents? As for whether this data uh do exist, I'm sure that they are in the dosiers. However, as know that for the special finance committee settings, when it asks for the information, for example, the Labor Welfare Bureau, we have to deal with um uh one thousand twenty-six question in such a short time. Uh we not go through each dossier to look for information. If we do this, we're probably not able to provide replies to all these number of questions. So that we can only tell it like it is. That currently, the social welfare department does not have statistical information on these uh cases. That for the multidisciplinary case conferences on protection of child with suspected child abuse, will the social welfare department had a role in this conferences? Um Deputy Director of Wealth, Social Welfare, usually for this kind of conferences um will be chaired by the um FCSPU uh at the district level to convene this meeting. There will be a police representative, and schoolteachers, so school social worker and medical social worker um to take part. Thank you, I actually found this on the website. Though you claim that the meet- meeting is chaired by S G D, so I'm asking for the details. And your reply claimed that you don't have such information available.
So my next question. On this multidisciplinary case conferences on protection of child with suspected abuse, MDCs. Who could I approach to ask for useful in- to get useful information? Is it the Labor Welfare Bureau, the Social Welfare Department, Food on Health Bureau, or the Hospital Authority, or none of the above? It should be E, that I should, I should just ask your um supervisors, that is the chief secretary's office for uh before I can get answers. Well, it involves substantial statistical work, I believe, in answering this question because on average each year, some eight hundred cases are handled. So if we want to answer this question, we have to look, go through the eight hundred files. And then find out the healthcare personnel who were representatives sent by the hospital authority. So we need to, that means go through the file records and look at the um the the actual file content. And that will require a lot of time to compile the statistics as a result. So i- it's simply not possible for us to answer such questions in the context of the estimates. Dr. KK Qua, I want to ask about homes. I don't need the secretary to tell me. And I know that it was more than ten years ago when decisions were made to build the existing homes. I'm asking in the remaining four years of your term, what you're gonna do? You need to give us figures, you know, the care and attention homes, the homes for the the persons with disabilities and so on. I'm asking this question because first of all, it's not the case that the government doesn't have land. And secondly, among the various priorities, um many other i- issues have higher priorities. We could spend hundreds of hectares to build um so-called innovation and technology park uh or in the northern district, in the north district and other places. When ha- ha- tons of hectares of la- uh land are used for these, all these um uh other purposes that amount to nothing. The Labor Welfare Bureau has the duty to uh secure sites in newly development areas for this purpose. Because if you don't secure the sites or to don't earmark the sites, then definitely there won't be any sites for such facilities. You know, Hongshui Q, for instance, Yinlong South, Northeast and New Territories, there are many sites available. Now, of course, uh we won't um object to the construction of uh public housing on these sites. But then we see every year, some six thousand elderly people died. And the government saying that what we do now, you won't see it, you don't see the result. So um you you're just saying that um um what you see now was started some ten years ago. So it's not nice for you to give an answer like that, as if um you have a crutch or something. So you still have four years, can you tell us this? Okay, it doesn't matter if um the predecessors didn't do a good job, uh that you're a new team. So the next four years, or at least in the coming year, how much more land would you try to secure for building the homes? And how many places could the these sites provide? Chairman, among the development projects we have, how much land has we reserved for building elderly homes? So we do provide updated information to the panel and welfare services from time to time. We now have twenty-seven projects uh for or on elderly homes. In the future, how uh how much development there will be on how many sites? Well, we don't have the information at hand. And as you know, uh when we, uh the Development Bureau announce the um land sales program, it's done every six months. So I I don't have the information here. But all I can say is that whether it's um comprehensive development area or new development areas or redevelopment areas, if we want such facilities in these areas, the most effective way is for us to uh amend the planning standards. Under the current planning standards, there is not a ratio for elderly care homes, and that's what we are actively working on. We hope to include this ratio in the planning standard. So in future, at the stage of planning, the needs for such facilities would have been included, uh covered in development projects. Well, I welcome that approach, but uh twenty-seven sites, how many places could they provide? And more importantly, we're not talking about the land sales. It's about the Labor Welfare Bureau asking for so much land area for building these facilities. It's squarely within your bureau, don't try to pass the blame on to others. Well, it it's uh with, it's done within the scope of planning, the planning standard. For um facility, community facilities needed, that will be included in the outline zoning plan by the planning department. Of course, the department will then consult different departments and uh such as the social welfare department. And we see there is need for such uh homes, we'll in- we'll include the amounts. When would the the ratio be included in the new planning standard? Well, we're working very hard with the Raffin Bureau, can be done within twenty eighteen, we will have such a ratio. Well, we're just trying to, we 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 uh in charge of, we could just ask for it, but it's not up to us to to revise the planning standard. Thank you. Dr. Fan En Chong. Oh, you've been proposing to revise the planning standard for a year now, it's still not done. Is the government coming from within the government? And it's about a government department making a change, how come it takes such a lot, a year, it's still not done? And then you also have a higher ratio for institutional care than for community care. Honestly, if you just want to set a ratio so you could just snatch more land, then try to snatch more land for community care. You're talking about aging in place, so you want people to stay in the community. I don't know what your considerations are, but somehow he's always putting the horse before the uh the car, the car before the horse. I've been complaining so much. Well, let me change subject, compassionate rehousing. In official documents, uh we told the compassionate housing for those with pressing and long-term housing needs due to special circumstances. So and because there are no other options, so um the rehousing will be offered. Usually, we're talking about people with disabilities or victims of domestic violence. In twenty thirteen to fourteen, under the compassionate housing, rehousing, there's about one thousand one hundred cases. And then uh uh one thousand six hundred cases, and then by seventeen eighteen, there's a drop of five hundred cases to about eleven hundred cases. So a drop of thirty-five percent in four years. As for conditional candidacy, well, it often happens to is probably, is usually because the divorce proceedings are not finalized. Now, the same family could not apply for two minute, two units, so that's why there's conditional candidacy when there's an ongoing divorce. It the, it was three hundred and sixty, uh three hundred two cases in uh four years ago, and now seven hundred and twenty-seven cases, a drop of fifty-eight percent in four years. So compassionate, so that the, that we know there's a pressing housing need, what if there is a domestic violence case or uh there's a sudden change in the family circumstances? For example, someone has an illness or disability. So uh it's not suitable even for the person to apply for CSSA to rent such divided flats. And there's medical um certificate from the doctor. Still, the number of such cases drops substantially, how can it be? Uh more than a ten years ago, the government already said they would set aside two thousand um units for compassionate rehousing, that's uh put down in white and black and white. But now each year, there's a recommendation for just about one thousand cases, how is it possible? What's happened there? So how, how come you keep tightening the requirements? So for people who need compassionate rehousing, they not getting the needed support. Dr. Zheng, can you please um tell us which reply number it is? If I uh recall correctly, um for these seventeen to eighteen uh figures, that's a figure up to the end of not twenty seventeen, right? Now, I didn't quote the figure. I'm talking about thirteen to fourteen and then up to sixteen to seventeen for seventeen eighteen, that we don't have the full figures yet. That's why I've not quoted the figure for twenty seventeen to eighteen. Now, my understanding is in terms of operation and the policy, we have not made any adjustments or changes at all. Yeah, as I um review the reply to answer questions, I also noted the figures. I uh tried to find out what uh so- social circumstances have changed leading to the figures. But in terms of figures, I don't see any changes, perhaps the director could supplement. Yes, the the, it's not because we have tightened the eligibility or in many cases, we refuse the assessment. But rather, the SWD and the housing department have um collaboration on many fronts, we've set up various mechanisms in the past few years. Uh the the way we work is that, as I say, if it's about a household wanting to um split, then there's no need to refer the case to the social welfare department for compassionate rehousing. The housing department will do it, it will deal with the case on its own. And that's a key reason why there's some reduction in figures, but doesn't mean there are fewer um such cases. Just that some of these cases have been handled by the housing department on its own. Now, I think what the director is saying is fabrication. You know how difficult it is to split a household? Uh you see, you think the housing department will legislate a household so easily? And if involves a domestic violence, uh that involves a divorce, definitely is a case with the S social welfare department. It's simply not possible for the housing department to work on it on its own. If that's the case, give me the figures. How many of the split household cases to be dealt with by the housing department? So there is no need for compassionate rehousing, please provide the figures. Well, I think then we have to ask the housing department. Now, I was involved in the twenty eighteen review uh uh from my recollection, recollection is what the, exactly as the director said. Hmm there is the Integrated Family Services Center. Um each year, there are about six to seven thousand referral cases from the housing department. So at the time, the social welfare department talked to the housing department on how adjustments could be made to the referral criteria, so some of the cases could be dealt with by the housing department directly. Now, Dr. Zheng, you refer to the table. You see, for compassionate rehousing cases by housing department thirteen fourteen and up to sixteen seventeen, there's a drop to two hundred and fifty-four cases. It's because um uh of uh of the result of discussion between the housing department and the social welfare department. No, that's total reference, because they've tightened the criteria, they won't even make the referral, that's why. No. Seeking referral, you mean? But it's, but but the only if you allow the referral, can they make the referral? Next, Mr. Shu Kachun. Thank you. On domestic removal grants, my first question, my question was unanswered, also I'd like the department to answer the question. Second question. At the panel on welfare services and then other pa- other panels, I've already asked this question. So and I already wondered, I will ask the same question again here. The five um centers for um divorced, uh separated families and um the increasing staff for the family and protective units, family service protective units. So how, how much more manpower are you going to give the fifty-six billion dollars? How are you going to distribute that money? Last time when I asked, you said you're not ready to give answer. And this time I asked the question, you're, in your reply, you also said you're not ready. I'm talking about a family and child protective services units. And then but they, they, we already have the budget debate coming up, and you say you're still not ready, so I don't know what you're gonna do. Next, um two five five, third question, two five five. The government said that it doesn't keep records on the actual amount of received by CSSA recipients of the basic rate. But then I found from documents submitted by the government to the panel on welfare services, you do provide information on the average figure. For example, um when you replied to an oral question of Dr. Priscilla Lang, uh the figure given was five thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and six thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars respectively. How come now you're saying that you cannot provide figures on singleton cases uh in CSSA repayment? Is it you want to do it or you can't do it? On domestic, uh on rent allowance, we can go back on our policy discussion, I don't have the information at hand, we will, I'll go back and look at it. For the um manpower fi- figures, I don't know if my colleagues are able to give the information now. And also figures on CSSA payment actual amount. About the co-parenting support center, we have a pilot scheme now. And the focus is on children contact service. As for the five support centers, apart from children contact service, there's also co-parenting support. But for the current pilot scheme on child contact service, right now, we have four point five social workers as a ratio, we also have carers. And then when we consider the co-parenting support centers, there's the children contact service, there will also be other forms of support, and then we refer to the experience of the pilot project. What about the family and child, um, family and child protective services units, the fifty-six billion dollars? How are you going to distribute that? For the family service centers, we have over a dozen social workers in addition. As for the family and child protective service unit, each unit will have an additional one social worker, so eleven in total. Sixty-four IFSCs, each center has over a dozen social workers? No, we have five support centers. They will be operated by NGOs. As for the integrated family service centers, the, for the forty-one operated by the social welfare department, uh, that's mostly, that is primarily for district support, so we will have an addition of a dozen or so social workers. That means in each, um, district, we will have someone with a dedicated task of support coordination. Now, I just asked for a simple, I just asked for straightforward figures. How many, yeah, how, how much more in, for existing centers, one or two each center? That's all, you said you, you have an increase of a dozen staff members for all the centers or each center, why can't you just give a straight answer? For integrated family service centers, eighteen social workers, um, family and child protective services units, eleven additional social workers. For the five support centers, we're still considering the addition of staff, but we'll refer to the experience of the project, uh, to the pilot project now. And earlier, I already gave you the figures on the pilot project. Dr. KK Quo. I don't know if an elderly person, when, uh, was featured in the international news, uh, Uncle Yun, he stole dustbin at his place of work. And then he took it on the MTR and he was arrested for theft. This is young old that you mentioned, that is, the government doesn't care about him. Um, he's not given, because there's no universal retirement protection, and so he just works as a part-time cleaner. There's another news report about seventy-five-year-old lady selling um, scrap cotton boxes for a dollar, and she's arrested. Now, we have some three thousand one hundred billion dollars in reserve, but we always made it to international news, and we featured as society with a wide wealth gap, and that we don't care for the elderly here. Both you and Matthew Zhang have been rather careless. You have, um, um, made the, the age of retired, retired, you have extended retirement age to sixty-five, and then you are forcing people between sixty-five and seventy, the so-called young old, to work and fend for themselves. I think the impression people get is that the government is sick, is very sick. It's not trying to find a way to help the elderly enjoy their retirement, but rather you're using all means to force old, elderly people to work. And of course, they always take up the lowest-ranking menial jobs without any protection, like, um, you know, as garbage worker or, or dishwasher, or, or washing dishes. So they don't get any protection, they have no benefits, no health benefits, no nothing at all. So what is it on your, what is on your mind really? Do you want to drive out all old people, and then you will consider your job done? Now, in other countries, uh, governments are helping elderly people to enjoy their time, but instead, here, you're forcing them to work. I have no expectation of you, but I just want to know whether you have any policies to help them in future? Or maybe for this group of people who work, would you give subsidy to the employers, other than that, would you help them in other ways, such as healthcare, uh, job protection, or, or labor protection and so on? Now, so, so in any ways, you help these young, old people which you, whom you try to drive them to work?
Quite near how to answer this question, of course, for, um, the Alex claims that you're driving old people to work. So all that we have done, you're encouraging those who over sixty-five to work, and yet you are denying this. When we're encouraging them, but not driving them to work, you're not offering any retirement protection. You're disregarding their poverty, one-third of the poor elderly is in poverty. There's no solution, and yet you come with sitting on trillion of reserves, and yet you exhausting all means to drive them to work. I'm asking, do you offer any concrete protection, and you couldn't give the answer? Um, for this, eight, the, uh, over age sixty-five, twelve percent of those, and sixty-three hundred of CSSA, and, um, some of them is on a OAA, a thirty-eight percent. And they will be entitled to a higher OH allowance, about another thirty percent is on the OH allowance as well. And Dr. Fernando Zhang, some, uh, respond, oh, three eight. On the, uh, uh, residential homes not comply with the RCH ordinance, and he replied that not one home had had license revoked, and just not, just one premise denied a renewal. And the response, he claimed, uh, what, and, um, the conviction, the penalty is only two thousand dollars. I noticed that it's a King Ford, uh, elderly center on December, uh, last year, it was convicted, and, um, with insufficient staff, each offense, five, six hundred dollars, it was two, eight hundred dollars. So looking at this, that why are we setting so low standards for the elderly care? That for the LCH is not doing such a good job, we already have such a low standards, just from seven at night to ten the following day, that the manpower ratio of care is one to sixty. And yet, we could not hire enough people. And the government keeps saying that we don't have, there's a manpower shortage, and now that you know the problem, and that you are, again, inspection, and, um, giving verbal warning, and still shorten manpower, and finally taken to court and convicted, and yet we, um, given such a light fine. So imagine how much money they saving per month? And yet we continue to tolerate this. So, um, this, um, the secretary, says, as Baku Tian, asks if you have any passion, I believe you still have commission. And what's your view on the, uh, care standards for the elderly, for the quality of their private nursing homes? And any, do you have any ideas how to improve them?
Chairman, I believe that Dr. Zhang have took part in the, on the review of the ordinance. And for the figures raised by Dr. Zhang, that's, this at the court verdict, I believe that the penalty is too light. So in a course review, we, uh, consider whether in some scenarios that we can toughen the penalty. For example, uh, the labor ordinance have the similar situation that the, uh, the court, uh, ruling on a penalty had failed to have a deterrent effect. So in the review of the ordinance, we hope we can address that so that in future, uh, such prosecution and the penalty will have enough deterrent effect. And as we all know, that the private care home, their, their quality differed wildly. So in this budget, we hopefully provide extra resources for them to set up a work team to this private homes to uh, provide support services to help them. So in terms of the equality control, we shall, uh, continue to work on it. So on A O five three, on the RCHD licensing. Four years ago, we have finished the legislative exercise. And yet, there are about eighty percent of the RCHD yet to be licensed. Hopefully, by twenty nineteen, they are all to complete on the licensing requirements. So maybe the executive director of social welfare, do you have any plans to let these homes, including disadvantaged and the problem one, to successfully comply with the license requirements? And what have, any difficulty in character ratification works, what kind of assistance would you offer to them? Uh, second, and, um, that, we already give that in the, in my reply, so I'll defer to the director to respond. In the past, we've set up a goal, that hopefully within two years, that all the RCHDs will comply with the licensing conditions. So let me clarify with that the licensing conditions mainly concern the hardware. However, in terms of the quality of care, there's been no exemption. And what have we done in the past is that the lottery funds have offered subsidy. And for the accreditation scheme, about sixty percent, uh, well, have been raised to ninety percent of the, uh, subsidy. And we also simplify the procedures on crediting their personnel, and for the documentation, we're also offering a lot of templates. We have professionals from the social welfare department and to consult and support for the personnel carrying out the ratification works. At the end of last year, about thirty percent of the RCHDs, uh, obtained the licenses. And we're confident that by the end of, uh, this year, they will reach sixty percent. Most of these, uh, RCHD had already commenced their works, or hired authorized persons to carry out the work. And, and for every, well, and our, our department actually visit every RCHD to discuss the ratification works. And hopefully, by the end of this year, sixty percent will, uh, be complied. And we're confident that, uh, all will comply by twenty nineteen. Next, Dr. Xu Kucheng.
My two questions were to on, uh, street sleepers. Reply number two forty-three. On the, uh, collection of figures on, uh, two street sleepers, I think they're facing a three-nil situation, so called. There's no, uh, street sleeper family policy, no dedicated department handling them, no, uh, regular, um, uh, statistic collection. They are registered over at one oh seven five, as for, and when I asked in the welfare service panel, and, um, no departments as well, uh, had taken responsibility, so let alone the policy, we even get the, get, able to get the figures. And for this so-called three-nil social demographic, would the LWB check them up? So that we can address this three-nil dilemma. And reply two nine eight, oh, oh, actually, three one seven. And the government planned S twenty K spaces to two hundred and twenty for the homeless. And you claim that the occupancy up eighty percent, and there would be a substantial increase in spaces for the homeless. And I'm talking about, um, one hundred and seventeen, one thousand seventeen hundred and fifty people, as opposed to changing twenty, two spaces, places. Would the government seriously consider uh, 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 plans for, uh, dormitory for singletons? Would you, government, consider improving the environment of these hostels? And so that, um, they can live there instead of living on the streets? And for the support and the services of the home sleepers, that's homeless that's handled by the social welfare department. Centers, and members of public taking up, uh, public spaces as their home, that will involve multiple departments. And at this case, it would require, um, the coordination of the district office, which is a clear delineation. You can't say that the homeless, um, are, uh, the nobody in charge of them, because on the different side of the homeless issues take on different departments. And different departments who can talk to each other on how to collaborate. As for the, um, homeless, um, the root of the problem was that, um, uh, the accommodation and the rent issue. So as for the social work department, we hope to enhance our services. So, uh, listening to, um, Mr. Xu's question, I need to clarify that is of the view that the environment of the singleton homeless hostels are in poorly living conditions. So I'm not sure what his, as, um, judge, judgment behind this question. If we actually visit the, um, uh, homeless hostel, um, there are in poor hygiene conditions. If the bureau claims that we install aircon later on. So, uh, so for the relocation of the homeless hostels, that is what we have successfully lobby for. I'm talking about, um, on the, the, um, environment of the homeless hostel are less than desirable. Response number oh four oh, Dr. Fernando Zhang. On the, um, pilot scheme on onsite preschool rehabilitation services, and you provide some figures, I noticed that in your response to Dr. Fernando Zhang, that on the average waiting time, and, and you, you respond to claim that thirteen point five to eighteen point two months. That is not considered ideal. So if they require such kind of services, if the waiting time is more than a year, um, the likelihood of, uh, reversing it or actually losing valuable time. Would the government consider increasing more resources to this scheme so that the waiting time can be shortened? Or unless you view that the thirteen point five to eighteen twenty-two months is within acceptable levels?
And chairman, for the thirteen point five to eighteen point two waiting, months of waiting time is not a matter of simply, um, as, um, uh, acceptable or not, is. As well note that, um, if there's special education needs identified in preschool children, the earlier we can provide, the better it is. Especially, um, the early education and the funding centers, the original objectives, they can intervene by age three. However, there's a waiting time for the assessment, so by then, they will receive the service at four or five years old. So in twenty seventeen policy dress, the chief executive had, have raised, mentioned the objective that hopefully the waiting time can be shortened to zero. And Dr. Fernando Zhang earlier hem, speak of the planning and the projections, that when we can achieve this goal, and I already responded that, um, already conducting a review, and hopefully by the completion of the review, we'll, we'll see how could we give an account to the relevant panel. And we shall continue to work, uh, And we shall continue to work towards expanding the service so that the waiting time can be shortened gradually to eventually becoming zero.
Thank you for your answer. But do you have a timetable that when you can finish the plan to update the panel, maybe the next three months or six months, or next year? In giving us the timetable. Chairman, secretary, even though we don't have a timetable, however, hopefully we can, we hopefully complete it within a short time. Can you be more precise? Six months? Three months?
I hope it should be in, in the short time. I can't give you a specific time. So two, well, you can't claim two years of being in, in the short term. Just tell like it is, just want to have an idea. While two years, I wouldn't say this in the long run. Hopefully, we can do this within this year.
It's more than about resources, manpower training. You need, you know, all support. It's the same as building hospital. If you don't have some healthcare personnel, you don't have enough nurses, there's no point. So for the scheme you mentioned, I hope it's not just about talking. It's just about, it's not just about how much resources you put in. It's also about the space you need and so on. Space, yes, we need to work hard on premises. Now for childcare services and so on, we are conducting a study now. We have to complete the study within this year. And then we may update possibly our planning work. And it's the same for elderly care service. We may need to specify the ratio in the planning standard. For manpower planning, yes, that's one of the bottleneck in achieving our target. So for speech therapists, physiotherapists and so on, we need to increase the number of training places on the UGC. There are also master programs. The social welfare department collaborate with tertiary institutes to increase training places. So hopefully, in the near term, we could increase manpower. And when we provide expanded services, we will have the manpower to provide them. Thank you. We're going up to four-thirty-five. So the last to ask question is Dr. Finan Chong. I'm keenly awaiting the zero waiting time proposal of the secretary. Now for institutional childcare services, preschool children service, care home services for persons with disabilities, there must be zero waiting time. Because we're talking about their immediate needs, and usually, they would have gone through assessment before they are put on waiting list. We can't expect these young children or elderly to wait forever. Oh-four-five. And it's about the waiting time for RCHDs. For medium, moderately mentally handicapped, waiting time is hundred and thirty-three point seven months. Hostels for persons with severe disabilities, forty-five months for my, like my daughter, the waiting time is ninety-three point three months as severely mentally handicapped cases. And this is just average, so the wait could actually be longer. We're talking about someone with a disability who's gone through assessment. Why is it that he's or she is made to wait for months and years? And you see the figure worsening, actually. For example, hostels for those with severe physical disabilities. There was some improvement in the past two years, but then last year, all of a sudden, it's gone up to ten years again. I don't know how you, the planning was done. Well, maybe the secretary will tell me this was a problem from the government's two terms ago. Now you're in charge, and the careram is in charge. For these homes, do you have any plan for zero wait? Are you doing analysis? For hostels, for persons with disabilities, in our Hong Kong Rehabilitation Program Plan Review, this will be covered. On the formulation of the plan, we hope to complete the work within, by the end of next year. But in fact, in the past few years, what we see, as you know, is that for persons with disabilities, their lifespan has increased substantially compared to, say, a decade ago. And so that's why the waiting list has lengthened. Now, in nineteen ninety-six, compared to now, the situation is very much different. And that's why we need to review, to review the program plan. And so we need to know what to do. And but at the same time, the past few years, the SWD has been working very hard to build more hostels in new development areas. And I, at the panel on welfare services, we have reported to you on the major facilities, the Anderson Road case, the Kun Tong site, and also the Sulem site. So there are many hostels for people with disabilities. And of course, it takes time for these hostels to be completed. Since nineteen ninety-six, we have not done any such planning. Who is responsible for that? We're talking about long-term planning for essential social services. So who is responsible with that? Now, let's not talk about who was responsible. In this term of the government, who is responsible for the planning? It's Labor and Welfare Bureau. Okay, then. Thank you very much. Time is up. The next session will start fifteen minutes later. Thank you.